Good evening, everyone. Are we good? Okay. Okay. We are live. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city council meeting regular session Monday, June 1st, 2020, 7:00 PM to order. And at this time, I would like the city recorder to please call roll. Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor President Freeman.
Here.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Clark. She is excused. Thank you. And Youth Counselor Dan Matthews. Excuse me. Welcome, Dan. You may come up and join us, and I'll introduce you shortly, but please come and join us. Do you want him to wait out? Sure. I just, you know, everyone's part of the group, so, perfect. And before we go ahead and formally start to, I've been asked to remind everyone to leave your mics on tonight. Please don't turn them on and off or move them because that's too much noise when we are live and it clicks and it's really loud for those watching, so make sure if you're going to have a conversation, you're not around your mic. So, thank you. At this time, would you please stand, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of nine of the states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We do have one item under Special Orders of Business for volunteer recognition, and I believe I do not see Daisy Hickman in the audience. So Daisy, if you're here and I have missed you, I apologized. No Daisy at this time. So, due to us participating in Zoom over the last couple of months, April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and we are, one thing that the City of Kaiser does is someone from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee goes around to each of the committees and says, "Thank you for your service," and it's the one time of the year we all get to enjoy cookies. So, on that note, thank you, everyone, for your service here on council and all our committees, and thank you for the people in the audience, because I know you are hard at volunteering in our community, and there's cookies behind here, so at some point, they will get passed around, or someone just go grab them. Committee reports, I do not have anyone signed up tonight for committee reports. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up to? I don't see anyone from any of our committees, but, no? Okay, great. We'll move on to item number six, which is public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda for the public hearing, and we do have three public hearings tonight. We have a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, also certifying the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. 7B, the resolution, is a certification of lighting district assessments, and 7C is adopting the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. So if you want to speak to any of those, please wait. Other than that, I do have several people already signed up for public testimony, and I will call them in the order that I have them. So first of all, I'd like to call up, is it, I think it's RJ Navarro. Please come up right here, join us. Your microphone should be on, and I know the city manager is over there, but normally he times us.
There's the timer. Can you speak directly into the mic and state your name and city of residence for the record, and then you have five minutes?
Perfect, thank you. So for the record, my name is Ramon Navarro, and I am a Kaiser resident. I was born and raised in Kaiser, grew up here in Kaiser, and today I would like to speak about a proclamation to declare a National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The reason that I'm so passionate about this is because I have experienced this firsthand. I've been, I mean, from many different angles. One, being somebody who grew up in Kaiser, I remember growing up and being told, "Hey, don't go down Clearview at night," or "Don't go down Plymouth at night," because those were really bad streets to go down. And, you know, for the most part, we didn't heed those warnings until one of my friends was shot on Clearview, and she was hit in the back twice. And there's just numerous, I can go on, you know, stories after stories. I remember a Whittaker, I believe it was the principal that was shot at a few years back, or not few years, it was a while back, and they caught the individual, but these things continue to happen. Just a few months ago, there was an individual who was shot in the parking lot of the Kaiser Station, and then this last summer, a 16-year-old McNary student was shot and killed in Salem. I reached out to our representative to try to figure out what we could do to prevent something like this from happening, and his response was, "It's not in my district, so it's not my problem." These are elected officials that don't feel the need to address gun violence, and so I think that we should do that as a city, come together and say, "This needs to stop. What can we do to prevent something like this from happening? What can we do so that our kids can feel safe jogging?" And this isn't just a Kaiser issue, this is a national issue, but Kaiser as a community can come together and do something about that so that our community isn't at fear of having to go jogging at night and being shot unjustifiably. So that's why I'm wearing orange today for Isaac Salim, and I hope that you guys will join me in voting yes on this proclamation so that we can recognize these individuals who have been victims of gun violence.
Thank you, RJ. I do want to let everyone know, we did receive the information for the proclamation just a little later than normal, not your fault, and the mayor is out of town, and she does like to really read all of the proclamations and make sure that we work within our city staff and get those awarded appropriately, so I know when she returns, she'll be working on that. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for sharing your story. Any questions for RJ? Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor Freeman. How's that? You know, I just wanted to add a little bit to, you know, I've been experienced of gun violence too, and I think it's, I want you to repeat the day, and what, is it June 8th? Wear orange?
Correct, so...
Make that real clear, because, you know, I want people to know when that day is.
So, just to read the top little piece of the proclamation, this proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and then we had kind of, let's see, "To honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we as a community must do more to reduce gun violence."
And just to, you know, to, I had talked to RJ here to post me, and I told him the fact that, you know, the process takes longer, it's probably going to happen this time, but I appreciate the effort that was made by Tracy and all those that did to try to put it on the agenda, and I did tell him that I, being a Duck fan, I never wear orange, that I told him today I would wear orange just to honor that particular cause, and believe me, it's been affected, you know, I witnessed something very horrible when I was young in Woodburn and Red in front of the Armory, and it has affected me really immensely, and I think whenever somebody just says the word "gun violence," that it comes back to me. So, I really appreciate you taking the time to bring this up, and I hope folks, you know, join us in wearing orange on, as hard as it is, I wore orange today. I had to borrow a McGann shirt that says Oregon State on it, but anyway, I do support that 100%, and thank you for your effort, and all those that support it. So, I appreciate it, RJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, RJ. Next up, we have Cindy Sweeney.
Hello.
Hi, Cindy. Just for the record, state your name and city of residence, and then I'll set the timer for five minutes.
Okay, thanks. Cindy Sweeney, Kaiser. The date is June 5th, this Friday. We found out about the proclamation that Salem passed, I believe, last week, so we found out really quick, so we appreciate trying to get us, you know, here, and it didn't work out, but even if we don't do it for this Friday, it actually is for every first Friday in June indefinitely. So, just want to tell you a little bit why I'm here. I'm an educator, and we started our school year, I teach in southeast Salem, and we started our school year with a lovely 90-minute lockdown, and I was, didn't have a class, I was at lunch, and so I ended up in our special ed classroom, and that was probably the scariest time of my career. Something just dawned on me today, actually, that this distance learning that we've had to do has been also very hard, but one thing I haven't had to worry about is a school shooting. I have gone to school every day for the last few years terrified of our school's going to be next, and it's getting a little too close to home. So I'm here to speak on behalf of my students, I'm here to speak on behalf of my colleagues and educators who have been fighting for this fight against gun violence for many years now. In light of what's going on in Salem right now, where we have armed people walking around with guns, I do want to point out that black Americans are 10 times more likely than white Americans to die by gun homicide. That is a fact put out by Salem. Moms demand action. I'm not a mom, but I'm an educator, and I am an auntie, and I am also a person who has a family member that was killed. Before I tell you about her, I'll tell you about the first grader that was shot down the street from gun violence outside of her house. She was just sleeping on the couch, the school's right, the house was right down from our school, it was in my first three years of teaching, that was in California, but gun violence affects us everywhere, and I don't want it to happen here in Salem, Kaiser. My cousin Heather Alvarado was one of 58 killed in the Las Vegas shooting, so I got to see a point of view that many didn't see. There were about 20,000 people there that were affected, 58 lost their lives, but in all the groups that I joined for families, way more than that happened. My eyes opened so much more than just feeling grief. There are young people from that concert that still have bullets working their ways out of their bodies. There are people that were at that concert that are paralyzed, have lost their jobs because their job didn't understand that they had too much trauma, and every time they were at work and somebody slammed the door, it would cause all those feelings to come back. Guns did not protect the people at this concert, the police, who, one of them is an extended family member there in Vegas, they were helpless, their guns did not help. People were dragging people from the concert and putting them into trucks and getting them to safety. One man had enough weapons to kill 58 people in a matter of minutes, and I got to see the diagram of their bodies, and if you've never seen a diagram of a family member's body laying in front of a concert only a few hours after a photo taken with her mom and her 14-year-old daughter and somebody else that was there with them, and when she heard the gunfire, she threw herself over her 14-year-old daughter's body and took those bullets and left two other children and a husband and a mom and a family devastated. Can everyone please just wear orange on Friday and acknowledge that gun violence exists and that people are affected? Everyone, and can we just please be proactive? Start of putting all these Band-Aids on and just face it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. Deeply sorry for your loss. Next, we have Michelle Roland Schwartz. Did I say that right? Welcome, and again, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Absolutely, thank you. For the record, my name is Michelle Roland Schwartz. I'm a resident of Kaiser and a proud parent of three children in the Kaiser Public Schools. I am also here in my role and my capacity as Executive Director of the Oregon Attorney General Sexual Assault Task Force, who are a statewide nonprofit organization who is based here in Kaiser. Not many people know that we are here. Our nonprofit organization has been in Kaiser for at least a decade. We're quietly tucked off of River Road, in between Sonic and Burger King, I can see Casa of Marion County and Los Dos from my office window. Most folks don't know that we exist because we are not a direct service provider. We don't provide direct services to victims of sexual and domestic violence. What we do and what our role is in the state is to provide training and technical assistance to first responders and preventionists across the state. So that means that we train law enforcement, prosecutors, advocates, sexual assault nurse examiners, and other healthcare providers. We work with higher education in K through 12, and our work is really to improve Oregon's response to and prevention of sexual violence in Oregon. I'm really pleased to be here on behalf of the Sexual Assault Task Force in support of the proclamation, and really appreciate those who have spoken before me in support of the proclamation and all the work that they've done to get us here today. And my role really is to talk with you about my perspective of gun violence as it intersects with sexual and domestic violence. Many of you know that when COVID hit our communities, the individuals who were impacted the most were those who were in violent relationships. The stay-home, stay-safe orders were really wonderful in terms of reducing our risk of spreading the virus, but that meant for those individuals who were in unsafe situations, they were in homes that were unsafe. I know that in our partnership with domestic and sexual violence organizations across the state, one of the things that we heard was that in the couple of weeks after quarantine, the requests for shelter services in domestic and sexual violence situations increased, almost doubled in comparison to the previous year. I also know that when we look back at 2019, the data that we have in Oregon is that we had 31 domestic violence-related homicides, and of those, 17 were committed with a gun as the weapon. For us, we really look at sexual and domestic violence as a public health issue in the same way that we look at COVID as a public health issue. Yes, domestic and sexual violence is a public safety issue, but it is also a public health issue. That is the same for gun violence. It is a public safety issue, but it is also a public health issue, and one of the ways that we address public health issues is bring awareness to that so that we can work towards prevention, and that is why I really encourage, and thank you all for your support, I encourage you to wear orange. I am a Beaver fan, so I already have this in my wardrobe, but really want to thank you all. I also acknowledge that when we talk about these issues, that there are people in our community and in the space that experience violence, and so I brought copies of the Center for Hope and Safety, which is our local domestic and sexual violence program, and I'm going to leave them in the back of the room, and then for anyone who is listening in, you can visit their website at hopeandsafety.org to find out more information about the resources and how you might access help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. And thank you for bringing up the Center for Hope and Safety. Let me just stop this before it starts beeping. I know Jane Downey, the Executive Director, usually comes to our council meetings at least once or twice a year. We've had the luxury of touring her facility and hearing all the wonderful things that they do for our community, but thank you for always bringing that buck up and sharing the resources, and we can make sure that we have that resource available too within the city.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jane. It's a wonderful leader, and their services are just a gem in our community.
And thank you for having your business in Kaiser. We didn't know you were here, so that's great.
We're here, we're here.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Before you run away, Michelle, Counselor Herrera has something. Sorry, thank you.
I'll come back.
Thank you, Pro Tem Freeman, Mayor Freeman. I'm getting better. I just wanted to acknowledge, thank you very much for that presentation, that was very, very nice and good information there, but I just want to acknowledge I met Michelle, and she's one, she's applied to be a volunteer in our city, so I think, was it the Arts Commission or something?
Yes, yes.
So she's one of our people in the community that stepped up, and I really appreciate that, you know?
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for that, and thank you for bringing this to the table, your perspective.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Carol Dorfler. Please state your name and city of residence, and I will also give you five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Freeman.
That's a mouthful.
Councillors and staff, is that better? I am here this evening to support the proclamation for Gun Violence Day on June 5th in memory of Jessica Rakos, age 6, Olivia Engel, age 6, Avila Richmond, age 6, Jessie Lewis, age 6, Grace Audrey McDonald, age 7, Noah Posner, age 6, a twin, Anna Marquez Green, age 6, Emily Parker, age 6, Charlotte Bacon, age 6, Catherine Hubbard, age 6, Josephine Gay, age 7, Danielle Barden, age 7, James Matola, age 6, Carolyn Privaty, age 6, Allison Wyatt, age 6, Dylan Hockley, age 6, Madeline Sue, age 6, Chase Kowalski, age 7, Jack Pinto, age 6, Benjamin Wheeler, age 6. Teachers and staff, Lauren Russo, Dawn Hawkespring, Mary Sherlock, Rachel Dovino, Anne Marie Murphy, all slaughtered at Sandy Hook Elementary School, December 14th, 2012, in Newtown, Connecticut. As of 2018, 7,000 more children killed by gunfire since then. This can never, ever, ever happen again. Please wear orange on Friday, June 5th.
Thank you, Carol. Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for sharing your stories. People that know me know I'm kind of sappy, so Carol, you started it.
It can never, ever happen again.
So with that, before we proceed, I'd like to just give everyone a minute, give myself a minute, and just pause for a moment of silence, if that's okay. Thank you. Counselor Herrera, I heard quite a big sigh over there, so thank you for that. And thank you, everyone, for sharing your stories tonight, they were very heartfelt. And now, at this time, I would like to invite our newest youth councillor up to the testimony table to join us for our social distancing, and everyone, please welcome Daniel Matthews. So Daniel, will you share a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, my name is Daniel Matthews, and I went to McNary before this, but now I go to school at home.
So, welcome. You will be joining us for this next school year? Yes? However the new school year will look in the fall, right? Some people may like the distancing learning at home, others may like to get back in the classroom, as I look at Counselor Reed, so, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public testimony. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just, Daniel's another one of my scouts, so...
I'm sure you've probably done a scout project or two with Counselor Kohler?
Yes.
Great, great. Well, there's lots of events in town, I'm sure you will use your expertise to volunteering and having some additional youth join you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you. So at this time, we will move on to public hearings. The first one is a resolution declaring the city elections, election to receive state revenues. I will open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, Oregon law requires cities to annually pass a resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. State law also provides that a city located within a county having more than 1,000 inhabitants must provide four or more municipal services to be eligible to receive state shared revenue. This fact must be certified by the Oregon Office of Business Administration and supported by a city resolution. Oregon law also requires the City of Kaiser to hold a public hearing to give citizens of Kaiser the opportunity to comment on the use of the state's shared revenues. The city expects to receive approximately $383,000 in state shared revenue in the upcoming year. This revenue is accounted for within the general fund and is primarily used to support our police department operations. Staff recommends that the city council open up a public hearing, receive any comment from the community, and then adopt the two resolutions and make any amendments as you see fit. And with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions for Tim? No, I do not have anyone signed up for public testimony. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this? I think Tracy's probably just double checking. Okay. Well, with that, then I'm passing these cookies, because they smell amazing. No. Okay, so there is no one signed up for public testimony on this item. With that, I will close the public hearing. Counselor President Herrera.
Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor Freeman. We doing this separately, one at a time on the resolutions? Okay, the first one will be, I moved that the council approved resolution R 2020 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second. Okay. Thank you, it's been moved in second, that the council approved resolution R 2020 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. The next resolution is certifying the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. City Manager.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Wood, do you have any other comments on this item?
I just lost my train of thought as I'm looking at this cookie, so...
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, and I will open the public hearing. Thank you.
So we're talking about the street lighting district now?
Nope. You're certifying four or more municipal services.
Nothing additional to add to that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Tim? No? Counselor Herrera.
All righty. Moving on, I moved that the council approved resolution R 2020 certifying that the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. Moving on to Resolution 7B, certification of lighting district assessments, open the public hearing.
You didn't close the other one.
Okay. So I'll close certifying the City of Kaiser provides four or more municipal services. And now, it's open for certification of lighting districts. Go ahead, sorry, making myself a note.
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, attached to this staff report is the 2020-21 Street Lighting District Assessments by District. Very little has changed over the last year with the exception of we've added a couple lights out at Kaiser Station, and that's the cause of the increase in the assessments over the previous year, so the majority of the landowners will be seeing about the same assessment on their property tax statement this year. The street lighting districts, each area of town is a separate district, they're typically put in when a new development comes and is put in. Basically, the city will front the cost of the electricity and putting in the streetlights, and then will turn around and assess that to the property owners on an annual basis on a reimbursement basis. We have a little over 200 street lighting districts throughout the city, and it's been a program that's actually saved the residents quite a bit of money throughout the years. I don't have an exact dollar amount, but it's been fairly substantial. I don't have an exact dollar amount, but it's been fairly substantial. And again, the city fronts the money and then seeks reimbursement from the landowners. The current assessment this year is $404,743.87, and that compares to $398,585.60 last year. And again, the primary difference is the addition of several new streetlights out at Kaiser Station. And with that, if there's any questions?
Councillor Parsons.
Thank you. Council President Freeman, I don't know how to do all that stuff. Sorry, it would have tied my tongue. So, my question is, I actually asked this by my neighbors, what determines the assessed value for each property owner? Is it the amount of properties that you have in that district, or?
Typically, the driving factor, the top line, is the number of lights. So, each light has a certain cost in electricity to that light, and that gets divided by the number of houses in that area.
Okay, so it's the number of houses. Okay, and a follow-up. So, when they took out, when PGE came in and they took out the old lights and put in LED lights, how come the cost didn't go down at that time?
We actually saw a substantial decrease, but that's been about four or five years ago now. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I could provide that if you so choose.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions? Close the public hearing? Okay.
Double check, no one wants to speak?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone here that wants to speak for public testimony? No, okay. Thank you. And with that, councillor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. How are you doing? Better? I would like to propose the council's approved Resolution 2020 certifying lighting district assessments.
Second. It's been moved in second, that the Kaiser City Council adopt the Resolution R 2020, certification of lighting district assessments. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously with one absence. Moving on to Resolution 7C, is adopting the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget-making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes, and I will open the public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, the Budget Committee met on May 11th and May 12th via Zoom. It was one of the most interesting meetings I've ever been to. Just the mechanics of it was quite interesting to be part of. I appreciate the Budget Committee for their commitment and willing to try something different this year. They did approve the budget that is before you tonight, as amended. As I recall, there was one amendment, and that was to add some additional funding to the Chamber of Commerce, to the tune of approximately $12,000. For tonight's meeting, I recommend that you open up a public hearing, as we have, take any testimony that may come from the citizens, and at that point, you can deliberate and you can make amendments to the budget if you so choose tonight. There are certain requirements, and there's no need for us to call an additional meeting of the Budget Committee to go through those. I'm not aware of any proposed amendments at this point. In addition, this is the official notice of your review of the police and the park services fee, as required by those resolutions. The city council is required to look at those and review them on an annual basis, and this will serve as that official review. In addition, we're required to state the property tax rate and adopt that as well. So, with that, if you have any additional questions related to the budget, related to the police park services fee, or to the property tax rate, I would be willing to take those now.
Councillor Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. You know, I didn't have any input, sort of, and it wasn't nobody's fault, apparently, because I had technical difficulties. My question is going to sound crazy, because I'm not, I want to make it clear, the $12,000 additional, is that a done deal? Is that already done deal for the chamber? Is my question? Because I wanted to speak to that, but I really couldn't.
It was recommended for approval by the Budget Committee, but the council can modify the budget if you want.
And when is the appropriate time to discuss that?
Now would be that time.
Gosh, now I'm not prepared. No, one of the things that I wanted to discuss was, when Danielle made her presentation, I wanted to add questions for, and of course, I couldn't ask, and of course, I don't have my notes on me, but right now, preparing to be the Pro Tem, you know, some of those questions I don't recall, but I do remember having notes and questions for, in regards to justifying the additional $12,000, and also, because I, you know, there's a lot of other, I don't know that, I can see them getting a raise, but I don't see that, I couldn't see the justification on that amount, being that it doesn't really, I mean, there's a lot of other businesses, other than Chamber, and they do a lot of great things, don't get me wrong, but I, you know, honestly, there's, I have issues with certain things as far as the Chambers, you know, the pictures that they paint, and what it really does as far as the outreach for Latino community. And I'll be frank with you about that, because I know that they have an outreach person and all that, but I speak to some of the customers, the members, and they have a different point of view on the help they're getting. So, I don't know if it's appropriate time to bring that up, or, but I did think that the $12,000 was a little bit high, as far as moving up. Now, to get into discussion, I don't know, you know, I don't think I have, you know, specifics exactly, or the quotes that I want to give, but I did remember, that was the one thing I wish I would have been able to talk about, or be able to have a voice. And there were several other things that weren't that pressing, but that was one that popped in my head, of course, right before the meeting, when I'm preparing to be the council president. So, I don't know where to go from here, but I did want that on record, that I couldn't say nothing at the particular time where I wanted to, because I was prepared at the time, so. Be it wherever it is, so.
Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Just for councillor Herrera's information, and for other councillors in a similar situation to this, the budget is a resolution, and so it does not require a unanimous vote. An ordinance requires a unanimous vote, and if it's not, it has to have a second reading. The resolution does not. And so, councillor Herrera or other councillors in a similar situation, you can choose to just speak your piece, make sure everybody understands your position on the record, and leave it at that. You can choose to make an amendment, if you wish, and you can also choose, at the end of the public hearing process here for this item tonight, to vote no, if you want, on the budget in its entirety, based, if you feel strongly enough, or to say, I'm going to vote yes on it, because most of I do, it's totally up to you, it would not hold up the process if the budget got held up. So, and I do that more, not just for councillor Herrera's situation here, but similar situations in the future, if councillors find them in that situation.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I have no intention of not, you know, the budget in general, I like it. I mean, I shouldn't say I like it, I have some more questions, but in general, I have no desire to vote no, but I did have concerns about the extreme raise, if you will, because I'm, you know, and some of us want to be consistent about money, you know, we should question that, and what, you know, measure the good that we get out of it with the, you know, I know that, I don't want to get political, but I mean, I know that they support a lot of anti-immigrant candidates, you know, who just go by there, and I really believe that that's another part of my point of view. So, that's something I take into consideration when I want, when they come to us for money, you know, because everybody pays taxes in this town, and so do the folks, all folks. So, that was my point at the time, and I couldn't make it, but I have no intention of disrupting the budget process, the approval, all that, but I want at least go on record that I wanted to, that I had concerns about that, because the picture that was painted was like, we do everything for the minority businesses, or the Latino businesses, and from my, and that's just me, because I happen to know these guys, my friends, folks, they have a different perspective on that, and sometimes, not all, just some, you know. So, I wanted to make that clear, and it can go on the record or whatever, but I have no intention of changing or voting no, or nothing like that, but now that I have a voice, I wanted to make that voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parsons.
Thank you. Councillor Herrera, I can answer a little bit, I think, of your question, as councillor is on to the chamber. The reason for the ask was, they had to lay off one of their people, so that meant hours were shortened, and in this time of need, we felt like those hours need to stay, they need to bring this person back. Not only that, they bought a lot of PPE equipment, and had been actually taking it around to various businesses, like they went to Los Dos Sanes, Teresa, said, you got to wear your mask, you need to do this. So, you know, so they are going around and doing that, and I do know also that they have a partnership now with the Latino Business Alliance.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. And so, I know they're making those efforts. So, I just wanted to speak on that sense. No one can answer your question, I just felt like I could answer that for you.
I appreciate that, councillor.
Okay, councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Another thing, Mr. Herrera, on that, to answer some of the question, one of the things that they are not doing this year is they're not going to ask for a discount when they use the Civic Center for some of their things, they were going to pay full price on those. That was one of the things, and then you mentioned that they weren't supporting candidates. Jose Gonzalez was one that they supported a lot, and he's now a city councillor at Salem. So, you just said that they weren't supporting.
I didn't say that, I said supporting anti-immigrant candidates, that's what I said.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, I think that they're doing a great job doing outreach, they've done a lot of work at Kennedy School and some of the other schools, and so I very much support their efforts to work with the Latino Business Alliance and the other businesses, so I, just to answer some of those questions that you had.
Thank you. And I know from speaking with Danielle, if there's something that we need as far as stats or statistics of, you know, whom they're reaching out to, businesses, I know she is very responsive. In fact, there was an email chain happening earlier from the mayor, because she thought there was something requested, actually, from myself, and I didn't request that, but I know she's happy to give us, you know, an update of how expenses and outreach and things that we're doing, we just need to ask. So, that's there. Any other questions from the council? And again, I do not have anyone signed up for public testimony to speak on this item, but is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on behalf of the budget, if you had questions? Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I'm not sure that this is the time to discuss this, because I know we're going over the fees, the parks fee and the police fee. Is that part of this process, or is that the next thing? Okay. Because I was a little confused, and I don't, I only found one of the two pages that I'm referring to. On page 171 of the budget, it indicates that the parks fee for the 2021 fiscal year was going to be $533, which is an increase, and yet, another place in the budget, I saw that there was no increase for this year.
Yeah, we were told there was no increase.
So, I just wanted to clarify that.
The later page is referring to the long-range planning documents, and that's unaltered from our long-range planning meeting. So, between the long-range planning meeting and the actual Budget Committee meeting, we did make the intentional decision not to raise any of the fees.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, the parks fee and the police fee will remain at $4 per month.
That is correct.
Councillor Reed, did you?
I guess I was just wondering, was that because of our current COVID-19 situation, as far as, to diminish that hardship on families? That was the reasoning behind that? Okay.
In addition, we also didn't do a water rate increase or a stormwater increase.
Okay.
So, we're trying to hold the line on all of our things that we have somewhat control over.
And we do review this annually, so we can see how that plays out for next year, then. We're just basically reserving that conversation for next year. Okay, thank you.
So, stay tuned for next year. Councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. You said as far as we have control over, for example, the sewer fees from the city Salem did go up, right?
I am anticipating those to go up, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to just take a second and, again, say thank you to all the members of the Budget Committee and for Tim's work on that. That was probably some of the easiest budget stuff I've ever gone through, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments? I will say, I've been on budget for eight years as council, and three years prior to that, so 11 years, and I don't think I've ever had a budget meeting that has been done in two sessions, in about two and a half hours, so hats off to councillor Parsons for being a chair of that, and then navigating through Zoom, and for any of you that watched during that, you know, we had our technical challenges of Zoom, but if you look at all companies, everyone's been having technical challenges with Zoom or getting the news going, so, you know, we're not, you know, we're going to have those, but I just think it was great, I do would echo that. Councillor Kohler, thank you to all the Budget Committee members, staff, Tim, Chris, all the department heads. This is your time that you get to come and ask for things, and some of my asks finally made it into the budget this year, so I'm like really excited about that, and so I think it's great. Great work. Councillor Herrera.
And I'm going to repeat what you guys have said, because I really think that the key to the smoothness was our chair, and then some of us, you know, couldn't talk, so that does, that's not time right there. But I really do echo councillor Kohler there, it was pretty smooth, and, you know, I would like to have said something, but I mean, you know, I mean, it started with our chair, it really did, so I appreciate that. My hat's up to you.
And I also appreciate that we're also trying other opportunities of Facebook Live, and we're translating things into Spanish for our Spanish community, so we are really working to have community involvement, not just at council, but at budget, and I think that's really important, too.
May I add something one more thing? You know, we talked about the outreach, I really appreciate the stuff going on lately of the outreach, but the true way of finding out how they're doing is to ask the people that you're doing. I mean, like I say, if you want to find out if the chamber is helping the Latinos, ask the Latinos. I mean, if you want to find out if you're really getting out to Latinos, it's easy to kind of self-congratulate, you know, that's easy to do, but if you really want to find out, and that's what you got to, and I really am proud of the effort that was made in the last few months. I think it was long overdue, but, and there's challenges, I understand, I understand that, but just the fact that we're doing something in that direction is huge to me. I mean, I've been here six years, and that's probably the biggest thing in the direction of what I want to see our community go, that I'm really proud of the effort made by your folks doing that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I will follow up, and I'm going to ask Chris to correct me if I'm wrong, but that was one thing that I wanted to make sure, and I did send an email, that we do have funds in our budget to keep transmitting, Facebook Live, you know me, I'm not a Facebook person, so, but making sure that we are doing that outreach and the translation interpreting for our Spanish community for council, and then we'll do it for budget.
That's correct. And the way we're currently doing it is a little clunky, it's not the most elegant solution, but we are working on that and trying to bring the cost down, there was a cost associated with how we're doing this, and we're trying to take as many pieces of the pie, sort of out of the pie, to make the cost less as we go forward, and make it smoother and more elegant, so. But, yeah, I'm very proud of where we ended up. Everybody worked really, really hard to get there, there were a lot of, you wouldn't think it would be that hard, but when you're trying to do that over a medium like Zoom, and then also broadcast out, there were a lot of different layers of difficulty to make that happen, and we just took each problem and solved it, and kept working until we had solved the entire problem. Tim spent a lot of time on that, so I appreciate that. David Dolly spent a lot of time, Rex spent a lot of time, so, and everybody was committed to making that happen, and I'm pretty proud of it.
And the viewership was incredible, so I think we reached a lot more people in our community than we would have had, had we been in City Hall. Not to say that I don't appreciate the people that are in the audience right now, so, not to say that. So, attorney Johnson, did you have something you wanted to add? No, okay, I couldn't tell, so I just wanted to be sure. Any other questions? Comments? Councillor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I moved that the council approved Resolution R 2020 adopting the FY, ooh, I'm going to say FY, 2020-2021 budget-making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. Is that correct?
Second. Thank you. And I need to close the public hearing, so I apologize for that. And I was trying to get my spot in the, on this lovely big budget document, so I can repeat everything you just said. I can repeat everything you just said. Maybe I'm going to get there. Oh, here it is. I think I just passed it. No. No, I can't find it on mine. Oh, there it is. I found it. Thank you.
Page 16.
In this lovely big packet that I have electronically. Case been moved and seconded in that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, adopting the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. Further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. Thank you. Thank you for the great discussion on that. Okay, moving on to administrative action. We have item 8A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to send a letter to Marion County alleging to be excluded from the community development block grant participation. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Johnson, and we may we may have some discussion about this as we move forward. But go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And Mr. City Manager, I was going to mention that Chris and I may be tag teaming this item. Before I forget, on a totally unrelated note, because I was not able to mention it to Mayor Protem earlier, we will be pulling Consent Calendar items 9A and 9F for very minor revisions. But I wanted to make that note to you. So you can make a note up there. Back to the agenda item. Interesting agenda item. Unfortunately, Mr. Brown decided to leave just before this item. Left on Friday, council meeting on Monday. This normally would have been his staff report because he was on his way out the door and he had a lot of things to pack up. I offered to do this. I knew about as much as he did. We worked on it closely, and then we would report to Chris over the last month, month and a half. For the benefit of the audience, I assume councils had a chance to look at the packet, but I'll briefly reiterate what what had happened. In late April, we received a letter from Marion County indicating due to, I believe, population growth, the county now certified as a quote urban county with the Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and was able to do community development block grants, CDBG grants, and essentially told us that in late April, that we had until May 15 to opt out, or we are automatically in. And so Nate and I kind of scrambled to take care of this. And one of the first things we did in the conference call with a bunch of people, HUD people and Marion County people, is say, could you give us a break on this timeline? They gave us a break. It wasn't it was supposed to be a little longer than this, but it's approximately a month. But since the new deadline is June 15, and we meet on the evening of June 15, we kind of need to do it tonight. And so we spent a lot of time, a lot of emails, a lot of conference calls on this. And it would be pretty simple if we weren't already in a relationship with the city of Salem and the Salem-Kaiser Consortium for the home grants. And I don't know the acronym for that. But that is to provide housing assistance, projects, and tenant-based rent assistance, TBRA. The one thing that became pretty clear early on is we couldn't go with both. If you switch to Marion County, it's a three-year program, you can't do the home portion with Salem and do the CDBG portion with Marion County. But Marion County is planning to do the home portion. I would assume they'll be successful in that, and they would share funds similar to, I believe, how Salem would work. Up until the last day or day and a half after Packet, based on discussions Nate and I had with Chris and the information we had, there was information that we would be able to, in a year, possibly opt into Marion County, even though they said it was normally three years. I found out just this morning that that's not accurate, that if we don't opt in with Marion County, we would have to wait three years. I believe long term, I think the arrangement with the county probably would be better because we would not only have the home funds, presumably, hopefully in about the same amount, but we would get CDBG funds, which you'd get zero of now. My concern was they put us on this rush with not a lot of information. And I want to be clear about that. I am not blaming either Salem or Marion County. Since they're further away, I'll blame the federal government and the HUD regulations, which are about as confusing as the tax code. Right now, and I'm going to let Chris jump in, I think a close question as of Packet deadline last week just got closer on Friday and on Monday. We have two issues that changed the dynamic a bit. One is the issue that I just brought up that said if we don't opt in now, we have to wait three years. That's a lot longer than one year. And I think that changes a bit. The other issue that Chris and I and Nate were all concerned about and still has some concern is whether or not if we go with Marion County, whether what we call the TBRA, the tenant-based rent assistance, would have a gap, even if Marion County jumps into that. And remember, that's from the home program. Is there going to be a gap to Kaiser residents starting July 1? And we didn't receive, as of last week, we were afraid, yes, that that would be true. As of just today, it's a series of many emails, which I sent out to you folks, it appears that there would be some remaining funds. We don't know for certain on that. But it's it sounds slightly better than it did last week, which was no. And so based on those two, it's a policy decision for you folks. It normally would come from another staff member. The legal department tries not to make policy decisions. But I think the question becomes a little closer to opting in with Marion County. And so with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager to see additional thoughts he might like to relay to you folks.
Yeah, you know, as of last week, based on the information we had, my recommendation was we know we know what we're getting from Salem, and we have an established program, and we have people who are relying on those funds every every month. And we didn't have all of the information we needed about Marion County. And we're not positive how their allocation formula is going to come out. We weren't positive about what kind of funding we were going to get. However, given the information that we received as of even just today, and I hate to I hate to actually speak against the recommendation in here, but I believe that that council may really want to consider, starting on the ground floor with Marion County as they transition into this new program, because I think the opportunities for our residents are greater with the with the county CDBG program, especially since they're moving into the home program as well. So we'll basically be, if everything works out well, getting double or not double, but more funding, home funds plus the opportunity for CDBG funds, which you can do a lot more things, and they're a lot less restricted. So I think as of today, which is after the writing of this recommendation and this report, my recommendation would be potentially that you you consider not taking this recommendation and instead going with the county and working with them. It's a three-year commitment. If that doesn't work out for us, in three years, we can make another recommendation. But I think the upside may be actually worth us making the switch to Marion County.
Attorney Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. A couple of items. And when we get to this point in the discussion, I if you choose to allow, I guess I'll call it allow the opt-in with the Marion County program, I can suggest a motion for you when you get to that stage I've jotted down. The other issue is, is I spoke to Madam Mayor Protem just shortly before the meeting by phone, and and she had a good question is, what happens if this doesn't seem to work out with Marion County, if you're going to lean lean that direction? And the reality is, for those of you who've been around for a while, is things I wouldn't say have worked out perfectly with Salem either. And what we do basically is we push them. If we feel like we're not getting adequate service, if you will, for our inclusion in the consortium, we have pushed Salem, and usually we get a response. And so the answer would be we would be doing the same with Marion County. We will be pushing them to come up with an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement that's appropriate, and we will be pushing them to make sure Kaiser residents get their full share, whatever that may be. You have to remember, this is not a mathematical. It's not like, okay, we have this exact population, and it's a proportional share. It doesn't work like that. But the flip side of it is we don't want to see, as Nate and I and Chris talked about, a larger pie split into larger sections with the with the county as opposed to smaller pie and having a larger, a smaller, a larger piece of a smaller pie is the way I put it in the staff report that we have with Salem. So we will be doing our best to protect the interests of our residents on that. And, you know, that's about all we can do. There's no guarantees on this. But I would agree with what all that Chris said.
Further questions of staff? Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So I just wanted to clarify the timeline a little bit. So the the three-year timeline, that's a county-driven.
It's a CDBG-driven.
Okay. Okay, through HUD. So.
HUD requires it to be a three-year.
Yeah, CDBG funds originate with with the Department of Housing, Urban Development at the federal level.
Okay, so that's the one setting the three-year timeline?
Correct.
So as far as our relationship with with the county and the city of Salem, that I guess falls secondary to that that three years?
It's all the same thing. And if I could, I hopefully not muddy the waters more. But what essentially happened, I believe, in the error in the letter, which I didn't explain to the audience, but until this morning, the letter from the county said, it's usually a three-year program. However, you can request to join in annually. So I thought, we don't have enough information. That seems like the best analysis to us, and the three of us agreed. Well, that letter was a form letter sent out to all the cities in the county. And Kaiser is the only city, my guess, pretty good guess, that's in a consortium with another city. So the issue isn't that we couldn't, if we were stating in Detroit or Mill City, we could join in in a year. But because we're in the consortium with Salem, it's either three more years with Salem or switching three three years with Marion County. And so that's why. And those are the HUD regulations. And, you know, you can kind of see it from their point of view. They don't want people jumping around too much. I mean, on an annual basis, at least, three years is actually fairly short. So that's I think that's how it occurred. And the county, when they said, and then HUD, too, when they sent the letters out, they didn't consider the fact that Kaiser was in a different, unique situation, as the HUD person told me today.
Right. And the county is still working on their program. So, you know, the way CDBG works is once a county or a city reaches a certain population, they automatically get opted in for an allocation amount of CDBG funds. And so they were probably notified, hey, congratulations, you crossed over this threshold, and we're going to give you money, and this is how much it's going to be, and it's based on population. And, you know, here's here are all the program requirements. I'll go spin up a program. So that's what they're doing, is they're spinning up a program with this brand-new allocation that they've never had before. So they're still working on their program a little bit also. But there are some opportunities there that we don't currently have available to us through the Salem Home Program that that could be really useful for our community and our citizens. But it is a little bit of a gamble.
Thank you.
Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Freeman, my understanding is that it's not really going to affect the city or the city's budget or anything that's going on with the city. So it's really about ways that we can help members of our community. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if we opt in or leave it alone, and we become part of the Marion County group, will the citizens that are receiving benefits now have to reapply? Or will that continue?
Let me tell you how I think it's going to work. Again, no guarantees. Right now, the the home funds to Kaiser fall into two general categories. One, are projects. They just did, and I don't know if it was a year, two years ago, how long ago, but did a rehab, fairly major rehab on some apartments on Chimala, as rehabilitation work. Those were home funds through the consortium. About four or five years ago, they built up several hundred thousand dollar project to St. Monica Apartments, which I don't remember where they are, but that was a brand-new project. But it's not every year that a fiscal project gets done. The other part of it is what we call the TBRA, which is the tenant-based rent assistance. So let's concentrate on that part for first. That comes from the home funds. What I anticipate happening, Salem, the city of Salem, does not give out those vouchers directly. They use our population to boost the total amount that they get from HUD for for that. And they send out that TBRA money to nonprofits or other quasi-governmental groups. Salem Housing Authority, okay, is not a city of Salem directly, but it's an entity that does the rent vouchers. If you're a Kaiser resident, you go to Salem Housing Authority for a rent voucher. Because we're part of the consortium, you would get that. Now, getting back to your question finally, our hope is, depending on how what the timing is, is that either leftover funds, which is what we found out today from the consortium, that is still remaining funds, if July 1 comes and there's still remaining funds, it appears that those still can be allocated through an entity like Salem Housing Authority. Secondly, if Marion County, you know, gins up their program, those new home funds can be sent to Salem Housing Authority, too, for Kaiser residents. So if somebody comes in, so the money comes in from the city of Salem with home funds and from Marion County with Kaiser home funds, if you will, and those all go to Salem Housing Authority, making it easier for somebody like, where do I go? Well, you just go to Salem Housing Authority. You get your rent voucher there. Nobody cares where the money comes from, if you will, but the people still get benefited. The only concern is if there's a gap there. And like I said, I don't want to guarantee that there wouldn't be. But it appears last week, there definitely would be a gap between starting July 1 until the county got the program up. Now it sounds like it's possible there wouldn't be a gap. So I want to make sure.
That's honestly, it's my only concern.
Yeah.
Really, is those folks relying on those vouchers each month, that there that there is the possibility of a gap? I think once we make it through that piece, the benefits will be will be much better with the county than staying with Salem.
Right. I guess just what I want to do is make sure that we're going to be doing the best thing for the people of Kaiser. That's my biggest.
These funds, as you kind of intentioned earlier, these funds don't really benefit the city, the corporate entity, the city in any way. We don't receive any of those. It's it's all about being able to get more funding from the federal government to do more projects for the people of Kaiser. And through Marion County, we have access to a larger pool of those funds than we do with Salem for a wider variety of types of projects.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So just to follow up on that, are there any funds available from any entities that might help plug that gap if there is a gap? Or are we leaving people hanging?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
So the I mean, so the answer is, since I can't tell you that there is, if there is a gap, we will be hanging, we will be leaving people hanging. And that's my biggest, that's my only concern, actually.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of thoughts. I want to, something Counselor Kohler said, there is no impact to our budget. So we're doing an intergovernment agreement, IGA. So as the city, are we not getting any type of admin administration funds? Or we are just partnering with Marion County so they are then recipients of the federal dollars, they're administering all the programs? We are just, for lack of words, we're tagging along to help them have a better application to serve more people, but we are not. So where I'm going with this is I am concerned if we've got work to do to develop programs, one whom will do that? And then where is the administration funding coming to pay for that staff person? Because most federal dollars that come in, and along with CDBG and home, there are lots of federal requirements that go with those dollars. And so I just want to make sure that we aren't signing up for something that requires us to do a lot of work, and we're having to subsidize a program that doesn't fully fund itself. Because HUD isn't, Housing and Urban Development is not known to pay full admin costs. And depending on how the county, if they divide those up, I just want us to be really, really aware of how that may or may not look. And I agree, I want the best for our residents. And so I just and we may not know that. It may just be too early right now, but.
We may not. I can I can tell you that that was a very big issue with Nate and I on the county. And I I don't want to try to get sidetracked and look through the emails. I'm fairly certain that answer was answered. I'm fairly certain that answer was answered favorably. I will be confirming that tomorrow, depending on which way the council goes tonight. Because we made it real clear to the county, we have absolutely no staff, resources, or expertise to administer these kind of programs. They have to be like Salem's has in the past. It's turnkey. You're helping our residents directly. You're not giving the city money. You know, it's like, you know, that we're not used to handing out grants in Kaiser. We're used to taking grants in. And so, and you're absolutely right. It's a lot of work, and there's a lot of regulations. There'd be a lot of admin issues if we were doing that. And so my impression, which I will confirm, is that it would be direct to the direct beneficiaries. It would not be a program we'd have to administer.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel Collier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. My understanding then, as I have gone through all this and tried to digest it, is that in essence, we're taking the responsibility of the city of Salem to do our work and giving it to Marion County, County Commissioners, to do our work.
The county staff, really, more. And the other thing that I'll add, that I think Chris mentioned, but I want to emphasize, and it's in that letter, the county, is the CDBG part, the non-home part, which can be used for more than just housing. It can be used for youth programs, other things. And that's money that we're not getting now. And again, we don't know how much it'll be, but right now, we're getting zero. And so, and as I had mentioned, and in my phone call with Madam Mayor Protam too, is it wasn't really that I felt that we wouldn't go with the county eventually, probably anyway, because it made sense to. I just wanted to get more information first, and I saw I was hoping that we could do this in a year. Find out this morning, it doesn't work that way, so.
Thank you for all of your work.
I have one more follow-up from that. So because this is a new program with the county, and hopefully we will be hand-in-hand doing some program development? Is that, will we be able to say, okay, if these five options are available with the CDBG funds, we know that option two, whether it be down payment assistance, you know, sometimes they do infrastructure loans. It just kind of depends on what they apply for. That may be a benefit to the city? I mean, will we have any latitude to help in some program design? Or it's going to be up to them, and hopefully then we will be able to come along with all the great program design that they're doing?
I suspect that they will ask for our input each year on what types of projects we may have in mind. But I also suspect we will not be providing any expertise on designing those projects.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. In reading the letter, I'm just curious. It states that the participation in the county will bring much-needed dollars back to Marion County. Is it critical for them and the dollar amount they receive for us to not opt out? And I'm reading this, that this could actually be negative to the county? Is that dollar-wise, if we choose to opt out?
If we opt out, the allocation to them will be less. I'm pretty certain of that.
So in opting, in or allowing ourselves to be opted in, because it looks like we just don't take action and we opt it in? Then we're actually truly getting additional federal dollars versus if we stay with the city of Salem, everybody loses? Is that, we don't get as much mathematically?
So the home funds portion of it, if we stay with Salem, will be the same as they have been. Whether that's a little less or a little more than what that home funds would be with Marion County is unclear. It could be that moving forward, the portion of home funds that we get, and remember, it's only what gets applied for. If, and it doesn't matter whether it's Marion County or Salem. If we don't have a lot of people that need the tenant-based rent assessment, if we don't have people that want to do, you know, these types of low-income housing, that they get the tax credits and all that sort of stuff, we don't have people applying for that. It doesn't matter whether Marion County is doing it or Salem is doing it, right? So it's really the addition of the CDG money that makes a difference. So you can see that dollar figure in the letter, a little over a million and a half for the county. It says what's the county's allocation, based on fiscal year 2019 allocation levels, with additional eligibility for home investment partnership funds to support affordable housing. I assume that what they mean by that is that's the estimate if they include our population. If our population's excluded, and it might be a very small amount, I have no idea. It's going to, but I think it is population-based. And I mean, that's.
The other thing to remember is that whether the projects are done.
Oh, okay.
You know, either in Salem or in Kaiser or around Marion County, our residents and our businesses benefit from those. So if I have a business and I need employees, and those employers are going to make a wage that forces them to live in a certain level of housing, we don't have that available here, but it is available in Salem. I can still grow my business. And so, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry as much about, you know, are those dollars coming specifically to Kaiser? Or are they benefiting Kaiser generally?
Right, and so it benefits the entire county, which is important as well, obviously. Because it's just like what you just said, so. Shane, I think I have something to say.
Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Protam. Shane corrected me. I think he's correct on this issue, the question, Counsel Smith. I think Shane's right. It's not based on pure population, it's a proportion of low-income groups. So it, you know, what proportion of low-income groups is opposed to the county or whatever, rather than just pure population.
Any further questions? Great discussion, by the way. Thank you. Okay, Counsel Herrera. And I believe Attorney Johnson has.
If, it depends on what the motion you want to make. If you want to make the motion to go with the county, I can propose that language.
Okay, if I may, that's the language that we're going to pursue, the county, correct? I agree with the, absolutely, the folks that know, the kind of, the county is the way we're going, correct?
We would change, so in what it says, in our packet says excluding, and we would like to include.
Madam Mayor Protam, my suggestion is we won't adopt this resolution or any form of it. Okay, it'll be a minute motion.
Okay.
So my suggestion, and you can just say, so moved if you wish, Counsel Herrera, is that the motion be to direct the city manager to notify Salem and Marion County that Kaiser will opt in, allow the opt-in to the Marion County program.
So moved, if you don't mind.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded.
It was moved and seconded to direct the city manager to notify Salem and Marion County that Kaiser will allow the opt-in of the CDBG program with Marion County.
Perfect. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. Shannon, thank you for reading that for me.
Thank you for your indulgence. Not that, it's awkward to come in and recommend opposing your recommendation, but that's.
But I just want to say that it came to the staff and with Nate departing, and you know, we probably have a few others of things that may be happening, and just, you know, the extra work so we could come back and really have a really good conversation tonight. So I just, thank you, Shannon, Chris, Shane, whoever was involved in those conversations. It really was good, and for everyone doing their homework. So thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 8B, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign dedication for reserve strip, Andrew Park Block A. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor Protam and Counsel. We have a matter that used to come up a lot more often in the past, but we're starting to run out of reserve strips. For the audience and council members who might not know, we acquired many of what's called reserve strips. They sometimes were called spite strips. They were a little, little way that the county, before we were incorporated, would control property from future development without coming back to the county. So they would say, "You have to deed this one-foot strip to say this adjoining property to the county." In the past, we don't really want to just blanket, get rid of them because they are useful. We have allowed easements of them. In this particular situation, the adjoining property, our news put some utility lines through, and we reviewed this with Public Works Director. There's really no reason for the city to keep this reserve strip. So the recommendation is to pass the resolution authorizing the dedication of that. So we just dedicated this public right away, and it wouldn't be actually owned by the city. We'll allow this project to go forward. So with that, I'd answer any questions.
Any question for staff? Counsel Collier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. I do have one question on this. I went and looked at the property earlier today. Are they looking at making that road go all the way through to that property? Are they just going to use the existing easement that they have for transportation?
It's just utility access, as I understand it, Bill?
Primarily for their sewer connection. They have the opportunity to connect to the sewer at the end of Famer instead of going all the way out to Claggett Street. So distance is money, and so it's cheaper for them. And I think it actually probably serves the property better because they can probably, I believe they can lay their sewer line at a steeper grade, deeper on Famer, shorter distance.
But as far as the traffic flow, that they're going to continue? Just leave that blocked off on Famer?
Yes, their access comes from Claggett on, they have a little flag that comes out to Claggett Street for their access.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further questions? Counsel Herrera.
Okay, I move the council-approved resolution R-2020, authorizing the city manager to sign dedication for reserve strip, Andrew Park Block A.
Second. Discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approved resolution R-2020, authorizing the city manager to sign dedication for reserve strip, Andrew Park Block A. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, one absent. Moving on to item 8C, a resolution ratifying the city manager's amendment to the administrative order 2020-6 to declaration of local state of emergency in the city of Kaiser as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Mr. Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor Protam and Counsel. As you know, over the last few meetings, I think it's been virtually every council meeting, we've had to kind of revisit the issue of the local state of emergency with regard to COVID-19. After consultation with the city manager, he directed that we prepare a new amended administrative order, which he signed last week, to extend the state of emergency for two weeks, and also to amend it to allow in-person committee meetings. And so the in-person committee meetings were previously allowed only if absolutely urgent. They are now allowed normal meetings. They do say that we will return to in-person meetings with appropriate social distancing in place for both participants and audience members. I will remind counsel, due to a recent council procedures change, any member can choose, when a declaration is in effect, any member can choose to have, appear by telephone or electronically. But they are allowed with social distancing to have an in-person meeting. I think that is primarily the only change, if I recall. We did continue the, I believe the other small change was the community centers was totally canceled before. Now we are going to allow small groups to fit into the governor's guidelines for gathering size limits for committee, excuse me, community room events. So without, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Counsel Herrera.
Yeah, I'd like to move the council-approved resolution R-2020, ratifying the city manager's amendment, administrative order 2020-6, to declaration of local state of emergency in the city of Kaiser as a result of COVID-19 pandemic.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R-2020, ratifying the city manager's amendment of the administrative order 2020-6 to declaration of local, declaration of a local state of emergency in the city of Kaiser as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. Any further discussion? Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. As I'm looking at this resolution, I'm not seeing any, on page 217, line 3, it just says with specific safeguards, that relates to the city hall opening. I'm not seeing in that resolution anything about the allowance of meetings, and I'm wondering if that also requires a specific safeguards?
That is in the attached, actually administrative order by the city manager. So that's attached to the resolution. So you're basically ratifying the city manager's action, and that details in the next document.
Got it, okay, I see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Discussions? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. Moving on to the consent calendar. Counsel Herrera.
Okay, we have one, two, three, seven items on the consent calendar today, starting with A, resolution approving the elements and concepts for the carving of the second-story pole. 9B, resolution authorizing city manager to sign contract for custodial services. And 9C, resolution authorizing disposition of surplus property, police department vehicles. And 9D, resolution authorizing city attorney to enter into engagement letter with Barry, am I saying that correct, sir?
Beery.
Beery, Elsler, and Hammond as special legal counsel for matters as assigned by city manager, excuse me, city attorney, sorry about that. And 9E, resolution authorizing city manager to sign agreement with the state of Oregon, Verda, from Dearborn Avenue to Salem Parkway Project. My personal favorite, 9F, resolution establishing from classification of property and evidence specialist one. And 9G, approval of May 18, 2020, city council regular session meeting minutes.
Second. We're pulling two items from the consent calendars, which is 9A, which is the resolution approving the elements and concepts for the carving of the second-story pole, and 9F, which is the resolution establishing classification of property and evidence specialist one. Second.
Is that correct?
So the motion includes all but those two?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm making that motion with the exception of A and F, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you want me to read them all?
No.
Thank you very much. That motion has just been made.
And a second after that?
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendars, items 9B, C, D, E, and G. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, one absent. Items 9A, Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. My apologies for this, but I got information from Lori Christopher, who is very active in the story pole project, as you may know, who indicated to me that one of the items was incorrect after the packet, after she saw the packet, and that is item, excuse me, there's elements, if you see, on the resolution. It's actually listed on the staff report too. And number nine says farmer plowing fields. And so it appears that there will be no farmer plowing to fields. From her indication, is that was too detailed to work for the carver, when she met with the carver late last week after the packet was out. So the suggestion would be to pass the resolution but delete item nine. And so that's how the resolution, the motion should read.
So red.
So red.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So red.
That's your motion? Your motion is to adopt it minus item nine?
Right.
Okay.
Like I said, so red. Is that okay, or do you want me to review it?
Do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution deleting item nine, which is the farmer plowing fields on the carving of the story pole. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent.
I will mention, Madam Mayor Protam, that when I spoke to Lori Christopher, actually, I'm not sure, it was live discussion or emails, we had several last week, that the elements, as you see there, there will only be about three that are main elements. The others will be kind of minor. be kind of minor, and there's a good chance it won't look like the design plan as I indicated, the concept drawing as I indicated in the staff report. So I want everybody to understand that. That was a design concept, doesn't mean it's going to really look like that, but those elements will be there.
Right, and I will echo that. I had a long conversation with her Saturday morning as well, indicating the same thing. Artists are artists and you can't really tell them where things need to be. We just can give them the items that we want and they will put it in the place that best suits and I'm sure it will look fabulous alongside our other one that happens to be out there. So it will be nice and we will all be waiting for that. And just for the record, we will have something also at the next meeting in reference to this as well, correct?
Correct. We'll have the bid exemption hearing and contract with the artist, hopefully.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Now on to items nine F.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. My apologies on this and my thanks to Michelle DePina for catching a small mistake. Typically resolutions take effect immediately and the last line usually says, be it for the resolve, if this resolution shall take effect immediately on passage. With regard to this classification of a new class for police department one, it should not take effect immediately, it takes effect on July 1, 2020, of course. And so that's the one that I sent out to you and it's on your dais. And so the motion should be to adopt that resolution with the change to July 1 on the effective date. So moved.
So mentioned or so?
So moved.
So moved and with the, with the change?
With the change.
Thank you very much.
Second. It's been moved that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2020 establishing the classification of property and evidence specialist effective July 1. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one absent. Counsel liaison reports. Counselor Smith?
I really don't have anything tonight, to be honest with you. We haven't had any meetings other than budget meeting, which we've discussed and everyone did a good job. I'm looking, it's nice to see everybody back. Oh, thank you, Pro Tem, Madam Mayor. I forgot that part. We're really just kind of running today, aren't we? We'll get, we'll get back in here, but I just wanted to say I appreciate our law enforcement and what happened in this country right now is appalling to all of us. And I just want to say that I hope everyone can find peace in their heart and not lose what the message really is. So I believe that we are some of the strongest people and that when we get back to what we really believe, I don't think there's anybody who can divide us. And I hope that everyone remembers that as we move forward. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. May I defer my turn to Youth Counselor Matthews?
Of course.
Thank you. So, yeah.
So this is the time that you get to share things that normally would be happening at school, but maybe there are some things that you know that are still happening at school. Share anything that you would like within the community with youth. If there's ways that we as a council or city can be involved, this is your opportunity to just share what information you would like with us and the rest of our community.
All right, thank you. So I guess a few things that I'd like to bring up are, I mean, first of all, congratulations to the people that graduated this year, and not just at McNary, but all the schools here. And I think there's going to try and be a virtual, or no, like an actual ceremony in August, if that's possible, sometime then. And if not, something. I know that also construction, that's another part, is ahead of schedule because there's no one there. So they could do some things that they weren't planning on doing until summer. I think that's all that I have. But again, congratulations to everyone that did that.
Perfect. And thank you for joining us tonight and we'll look forward to seeing you. Now Tracy, does he, do you normally come in the summer? Because normally you probably take summer off, but we would love to have you here with us, so you're more than welcome to join us.
All right, I'll see.
I know, don't commit because there might be more important things to be doing than coming and joining us on a Monday night at CalFO. So, but thank you. Counselor Coler? Do you want to, Counsel Reed?
Eventually.
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I had a Kaiser Homegrown Theater Board meeting. Their season has been postponed until 2021, so there will be no Kaiser Homegrown Theater things, neither will there be any of our concert series due to the governor's declarations. So that will be very sad for us, however, that is what is necessary for public health, so we will make the best of that. I tuned in to Coffee with Kathy last Saturday and as always, she had a very well-considered panel of people to discuss various aspects of our community and I really appreciate her leadership in that and I appreciated hearing from all of those people. I've been tuning into weekly updates with Superintendent Kristy Perry and last Thursday we had, one of her emphasis, emphases was on this idea of equity and being more sensitive to racism and how complicated that is. And it's easy to say that we don't have a problem with racism, but I think if you ask any person of color, they will tell you that is definitely not true. And so just to embrace that as a complicated issue and to educate ourselves about that a lot more. So I really appreciated that message. I intend to dig into that a lot deeper and have that affect the various aspects of my life. So the Kaiser Cultural Center will be opening probably late June. We have a meeting on June 16th to discuss this further, but the four organizations, the Kaiser Art Association, Kaiser Homegrown Theater, the community library, and the museum, all are staffed entirely by volunteers and those volunteers need to feel completely safe coming back as well as the patrons. And so we are doing that very carefully. So look for further information on that, but for now, we are putting that on hold. I was involved with the senior awards, which was really interesting. I frankly don't even know if they've aired yet, but we recorded those as a staff, we, McNary staff, we had recorded the award ceremony. So congratulations to all our awards winners, whether you know what award or not yet. As again, I don't know if that has aired, but we are looking for all kinds of innovative ways to celebrate our seniors this year and it's very difficult. And thank you for your patience in this and we wish you the best with that. Looking forward to the commissioner breakfast on the 11th, so that is coming up. Oh, one more thing about the seniors, Lisa McNary High School, the College and Career Center has been tracking scholarships and as of our staff meeting last Tuesday, we had over $10 million in reported scholarships for our McNary seniors. And that is breaking our $9 million effort from last year and that is still counting. And so Rochelle Ferris at the College and Career Center does an excellent job of keeping track of that information. If you have any seniors or know of any seniors, you might want to remind them to report those because that is, that is really important for our seniors to know that that, those resources are there and that they can take advantage of those. So really impressed with all of our seniors and with, they're taking advantage of those resources and Rochelle Ferris for keeping track of all that information. Bottom line, with all of these, with all the frustrations that have been involved with COVID and our current climate of race riots in various parts of the country and so forth, just wanted to throw out a reminder there to be kind. Again, these problems are very complicated and we need to embrace them, but just in terms of our interpersonal relationships, to just be kind, to be patient, to allow grace for people's shortcomings or other people's frustrations and to just do what we can to maintain peace in our community at all levels. So I just wanted to throw that out there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Just a couple of things really. I've been attending the League of Oregon Cities meetings every week and I appreciate Chris's synopsis of what those are. He does a lot better job of doing that than I do. But a couple of things that I really look forward to, June 5th, several counties will be able to apply for phase two and I'm excited to see that and increase in the gatherings and such. With the number of people that are being tested and the small number of positives and the number of people that have recovered from COVID, I'm encouraged and I just think it's neat that progress is being made and I appreciate all the people working to make that possible. Kaiser Community Dinner was held last Wednesday. It was kind of a drive-through dinner and thank you for all those people that came and made that possible. I think we served about 300 meals, so that was a lot of fun. And I'm looking forward to the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee meeting on the 11th and I encourage us all to pray for peace in our nation and do our best to get along with each other.
Thank you, Counselor Coler. And you know, my mom likes to go to community dinner and I have not text you or let you know, but she said dinner was amazing. It was hot when she got home and she appreciated all the signs out there and everyone directing traffic. I know she's listening, so, but she really appreciated just everyone is always so friendly, but it just was, as always, very well organized and went off without a hitch, so be sure that with your team.
I plan on doing it again next month like we did this month with the drive-through.
Great, thank you, because I know that is a huge need in our community still and it will continue probably for the next couple of months until we are fully back to what our new normal looks like. So, thank you.
And one other thing on that, I did mention that the council would like to come and serve again at some point and so we haven't, don't have a date yet, but we are on the docket, so we'll get to that.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Herrera?
We are here to serve, so. We had a good time last time, I really thought that was pretty good. And thank you for your effort in regards to the dinner, because I saw the line of cars, it was pretty good. It was longer than the one over at Burger Place over here. And you stole my thunder about the Kaiser kindness, but I mean, that, but I just want to reach out and congratulate Luis Lopez, one of our recipients for scholarship, because he also got a scholarship to play soccer at Corbin. So Luis was one of our young men that ended up doing really well. I was worried about him there about the fourth grade, but you know what? He was an amazing soccer player that really saved him, so kudos to him. I also want to congratulate, reach out to the Association of Oregon Lager Scholarship. They usually pick three candidates and one of them had to be another one of our students that we've known through the grade school level and her name is, and I apologize because there was, there was a couple of Villarreal's, Villarreal's, I should say, Rachel from, I don't know if you know Rachel Villar from McNary, but anyway, she, she was awarded a $1,500 scholarship and she will be attending Oregon State University. And you know, it's so wonderful to watch these kids because there were, it seemed like just years ago, there were little guys in Kennedy Elementary or whatever, but anyway, so I wanted to make sure I reached out and again to the grads, we wish the best to them because all the grads dealing with what's going on now, it's amazing that they, my son happens to be a grad late, he went back to college in his 30s and he's graduating from Oregon State. But, and they're doing their application, so that's, that's, a lot of people are making a, and while I'm talking about COVID-19, you know, let's be considerate because, you know, I hear people talk about their freedoms and stuff, but you know, the people that are actually dying and a higher percentage are people of color. And that's one thing in Marion County, you know, it's easy to say we're doing, you know, what about my, but I look at things as us, all of us, instead of just me. And, because it's great to think about this and that, me, 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 but our community, I like to think Kaiser thinks about all of us, not just ourselves and do for the greater good of all folks. So that's my two cents on that. I also want to congratulate my good friends from Salem that just recently were elected to city council. There will be co-members of our new LOC group, Jose Gonzalez from Ward Five, Virginia Stapleton from Ward One, my good friend Dr. Trevor Phillips, who his mom lives right here in Kaiser and she's a sweetheart, she's one of my good friends, Dr. Trevor Phillips from Ward Three, newly elected. And of course, Vanessa Nordig from Ward Seven. And they were, I'm just so excited for them because they worked hard and they're now new counselors, so that's, I want a shout to them. Also, when I talk about the community, I keep stressing about supporting our folks and I want to plug in Jeff and Cheryl's because tomorrow is their opening and I swear every time I'm there, I run across Elizabeth, but I never run across Jeff, but I got to talk to him and tomorrow is what?
Taco Tuesday.
Taco Tuesday. So after four o'clock, go down to McNary. They have one advantage, they have a huge open space where you can dine and enjoy beverage, but I shout out to them because they've been going through this, although they've been a recipient of one of our great grants that we received here, they, they could use some help right now along with other businesses. By the way, I did cut myself, I'm looking at myself now and I cut myself here, so anyway. But anyway, so if you can, join and support all our businesses, not just Jeff and Cheryl's. I just haven't mentioned that because I mentioned, I talked to Jeff and like I say, we go back a long ways. I had Zooms with Mono Mono, LOC Beacons, School District, I also was in with Kristy Perry and some of those. And that really is exciting to me. I also want to kudos to our police chief and Jerry Moore also for their, I talked to both of them and Jerry put out a statement and I talked to our police chief and as far as what's going on today, I liked their perspective, I liked what we have. And Chief Teague said something to me, they really struck me and I really appreciate that because it's so true that our cops, and I happen to know most of them, I mean, I coached and mentored a lot of them, you know, not a lot of them, four of them, five actually. But anyway, so he said something about, you know, we, we, we watch, how do you put that, coach, chief? We police ourselves sort of, you know, they kind of, everybody, and I know, I know that they have integrity, so that, that part on a local level, I'm very grateful to our police department. And I put that message out on my site this morning. Also, I'm kind of excited because I will be, on June 10th, I will be before the Senate Committee as part of the confirmation process. I will be on the Judicial Fitness and Disabilities Commission for the state of Oregon and I'll be sworn in. And I'm excited because it deals with the judges all throughout the state and the complaint process as far as fairness and conduct and whatnot. And this commission that will be part, I'll be part of as a public person, will make recommendations to the Supreme Court as to which direction on certain cases. And I think it's pretty cool because that's kind of my, I really enjoy doing that kind of stuff, reviewing certain cases of conduct and code of conducts for judges and attorneys, mostly judges, so that's a pretty cool deal. The last thing was, what was the last thing? Anyway, I just want to appreciate you filling in and everybody adjusting and I'm going to miss our counselors that are leaving us, but I just wanted to mention that right now because I'll forget next time. And I'm going to miss Marlene editing me and all that good stuff, but thanks for all the, being that it's volunteer time, you know, appreciation in April, March. I just want to take the time to thank all our committee folks that volunteer and I like to go out and reach out to them and talk to them individually. I mean, I think it's, it's good for us to reach out to those folks and I'm fortunate to know most of them. And if I don't know them, I want to meet them, so I want to make an effort to meet them. And that's kind of what Kaiser is. I call it Kaiser kindness. And I used to call it keep Kaiser kind, but then I didn't like the initials, so I just kind of went away from that. But anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. When did it? I did it. The only thing I really have is I have a chamber meeting next week and I'm not sure yet if it's going to be in person or Zoom. Thinking still Zoom because their conference room is like 10 by eight, so that really won't work. So, so we'll see what their, I'll get some more information too on what they're going to do with that added money that we gave them, so I can maybe report back on that. But anyway, that's all I have. Short and sweet.
Thank you. Counselor Smith? Oh, you already went. I'm going to have you go again.
Well, I did. I can keep talking. I don't have a problem with that. You can go now.
It was good being last because I was writing some things down. So we had the personal policy committee last week. I'm surprised Counsel Reed, we had so much fun, you must have forgot. But anyway, we always have very informed and great decisions and discussions with Michelle DePina, our human resource director. I will echo what people have said about, you know, being kind and patient. A lot of our restaurants are opening back up. You know, they're not at full capacity and so they're trying to adjust because they're used to having full restaurants and they're like half or less than half and, you know, I think their rhythm's off a little bit and so we just need to be kind and patient and give them a smile or two. I think that they really will be appreciating that. I would say continue to keep checking on your friends and family and neighbors, you know, it's just... know, it's just Kaiser, this is what we do, but, and we don't need to remind each other, but it's just one of those nice things. Again, thank you for the community dinner. It's always a wonderful event that we do. Next week, gosh, already seems, Planning Commission will meet on the 10th here at 6:00 PM. A reminder that all the neighborhood associations are not meeting during the summer, they've all, they always take the summer off. We do have the Marion County Commissioner Breakfast on June 11th, and it'll be myself, Counsel Reed, and Counsel Herrera, and we are meeting at Sherry's. And again, many echoes to graduating seniors, both in high school and college. So it's still exciting. You may not get to walk down the aisle and get all of that, but it's still really, really exciting. Again, thank you to everyone during our Zoom meetings and everyone that was watching us in the comforts of our home, which is kind of nice to be rushing home from work and go in the, in our office and do a Zoom meeting, and, but I mean, I kind of did, I did miss this place, and it's one thing I've heard in my office is people are going, who thought you would ever say you missed that face-to-face meeting, because I think a few of us are getting tired of some Zoom meetings. So I will echo a lot of the communication that I know our mayor has been involved in and our city manager, and all the emails that are coming out of just with, you know, what's happening from the League of Oregon Cities, what's happening in Marion County, what's happening on the state level, and it is changing every day and sometimes twice a day. Again, thank you to chief and the police department and all of our first responders, that they are critical in our community under any circumstances, and I've talked to some of the businesses who are the recipients of our grants, and they are truly grateful for the funds that we were able to provide them, so I just want to pass that along, but yes, they did have to apply, it was the lottery of the famous bucket, but, you know, the bucket, but it just, you know, a small amount really did help a lot of our businesses either pay bills or make some payroll, and a couple of them got pretty emotional with their dollars. So thank you to the city for that. And that's all I have. So with that, we will move on to other business, and this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Tracy.
Thank you, Chris. I do have something tonight. I think Counsel Herrera mentioned we are going to begin filings for council positions. So filing starts this Wednesday, June 3rd, ends at the end of August, so packets will be available tomorrow if you're interested. We have three council positions and the mayor's position. Anyway, anybody that needs additional information, please give me a call.
Very good. Tim.
Well, I have a lot going on. You may have saw the email last week from Chris regarding an upgrade to our accounting system, which is also going to include an upgrade to our human resources, actually not an upgrade, an addition. So we have a lot going on, there's a lot of benefits. I'm not going to go into all of them tonight because I'm going to be bringing a staff report back at our next meeting. Because of the dollar amount, it does require city council approval, so we get to talk about it later. It's going to be fun.
Fun. Chief.
I have a couple of things to say. One is to respond to what Roland said.
I misquoted you.
You misquoted me, man, it's not dismissive. I want to clarify, you sometimes see me during these meetings going through these thick books, this is one volume I sit on the board for the state that handles the decertification process for cops that are found to be morally unfit. And I chair the committee that looks at the police officers, and the committee chair is what makes the recommendation, recommendation to the boards. And something that I think that I see that occurs too often is, and this is what I was talking to Roland about, chiefs have a burden to develop a culture within their agencies in which the cops hold themselves accountable, and in which the cops believe they can report up the chain and that the person they're reporting on will be dealt with fairly. In the absence of the expectation of fairness, that's where you get the blue line, as they call it, where things don't play out and they don't get handled. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that we develop agencies that are, have a culture of accountability horizontally and vertically, so that's why your comment was.
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, my comments apart from that are going to be very much like Counselor Smith's. You know, we Americans are a messy people. We have these riots, if you will, not frequently certainly, but they're not unusual for us. The worst riot in American history occurred in the midst of the Civil War in July of 1863 in New York City. Troops were pulled away from Gettysburg on the heels of the Battle of Gettysburg that quelled the riots, the riots in New York City. So that's not unusual. We will get back to leading a good life. I've also heard it said that life is like a tall building, and cops are the only folks that get to go in between, with the rich folks living on top and the poor folks living on the bottom. Let me tell you, there are a lot of those hard-working righteous poor folks that won't live a good life, even when it's really good for us, because there are structural impediments to them leading good lives, and we in government have to make sure that we remove what impediments we can and don't add to those impediments.
Well said. I want to introduce Shane Witham. I think you all know Shane. Nate retired, so to speak, and Shane will be serving as the interim Community Development Director while we go through recruitment, and I would like to thank him for that because it's additional working time away from home, but it's also good experience. So Shane, what do you have for us?
Thank you. Just a few things we are expecting to bring in front of you, I'll say very soon, but really it's going to be July, maybe August, and that would be the Area Demaster Plan Amendment. We finally kind of have all the things that we need, we're looking to get that deemed complete and out for comments in the public hearing notice. I'm hopeful that we will get that done this week, so be just looking for that, and other than that, yeah, I'm appreciative of the opportunity. I know you all know where Nate's office is. Mine is right next door, so don't hesitate to stop by and ask any questions if you have them, of things that are going on in the city, or things that I can be doing for you. I am extremely grateful for the opportunity. I worked with Nate for his whole time, which was 16 and a half years. I've been here for 22, but Nate was a great boss. He always gave me extra opportunities, and I like to feel that he gave me just one last opportunity out the door, and that was the Easter egg hunt that is to figure out what things that I've gotten myself into in this interim capacity that I don't know that I'm into yet, so.
It's the gift that keeps giving, Shane.
So no, I am appreciative of that, and we, I will be extremely busy, and it should be fun, so, thank you.
Mr. Lawyer.
Nothing tonight, Chris, thank you.
Mr. Lawyer. Is there an echo? By title.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Counsel, one item you will see on Agenda Input next week, we have council work session on charter amendments I will be getting out tomorrow, and I apologize, I wanted to get out at least a week ahead of time. The packet for you, Counsel President Freeman and Counselor Smith will be familiar with everything in there, I think, but the rest of you, depending on how much you follow this saga, may be new, and I want to be available for any questions you have, and I'll try my best to get that out. It almost was done today, but I couldn't get it quite finished today. So, and that's all for me.
All right. Any counselors have any final questions for any department heads before we move on? Yes, ma'am.
I have one for Mr. Lawyer. So I know with COVID, some of our, what do we want to call those? The swales, like down Shamala, like the grass in the middle is like extremely tall, and I did see some, I believe, public works gentlemen out trying to trim some of that maybe a couple of weeks ago. So will we be having more of our, either the company that we contract to kind of, I guess I'm going to use the word cleanup, or chop down some of that grass so it's not barriers when you're trying to turn and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I actually noticed some of that on the western piece of Shamala Road last week, last weekend, actually, and I will be speaking with them tomorrow about what their plans are to come out and give us some service.
Counsel Kohler.
To follow up with that, they, I live on a street that has those things, and I watch all the time, obviously, but they were here in April and chopped them way down. I mean, and if they only do it twice a year, something has to be done in the interim because they won't come back now until October, and they're supposed to come every month, but they didn't come in May.
I'm glad to know that.
I tell you, I watch.
Tell me in the middle of the month you haven't seen them, so I can call and get them out there before the end of the month. Please.
Okay, yes, I'll do that.
Anything else? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, just Mr. Kohler.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just one other thing for Mr. Lawyer, the crews that are doing the work on River Road right now, they've been really good at getting all the signage and everything up and letting traffic go around, and so I just want a little kudos for the work that they've done there. It's been pretty smooth, really, compared to what it could be.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I do, the next item is written communication. I do not have any written communication that was in my box, so thank you to Counsel Parsons who picked up my mail. And then we'll move on to Agenda Input. Before that, I just want to thank the staff for creating our social distancing tonight in council chambers, and the first time entering the lobby of City Hall tonight and just seeing the hand sanitizer and the notices up, and just really, it's a lot, but it's very welcoming, so great job to the staff that created the lobby to ensure everyone.
Michelle.
Michelle. So thanks to Michelle and everyone for being safe. Agenda Input, June 8th, is, we have an executive session at 6:00 PM, and then we do have our council work session at 7:30, and it is to review the City of Kaiser Charter Amendments. June 15th is our next regular session meeting, but at 6:00 PM, we have an executive session followed by council at 7:00 PM, and then July 6th, gosh, that seems like it shouldn't be this close, but July 6th at 7:00 PM is our next city council regular session. Any other last comments before we adjourn? Hearing none, we are adjourned about 9:06. Thank you.